Good afternoon. I call the meeting of the Chattanooga City Council to order. Today is July 22nd. Thank you for joining us. And thank you very, very much to our City of Chattanooga Maintenance Team that is making our space livable today. We really appreciate all of their efforts on a daily basis. To get us started, I'd like to welcome Vice Chairwoman Noel to give us our Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
Ready to pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we gotta talk about that one.
You all will give me one minute, please. So I know a prayer needs to be said here today. And I'm gonna ask that you allow me just a second to collect my thoughts. Okay. Gracious Father, if you bow your heads, please. Gracious Father, I thank you for this day, Lord, life, health, and strength. I thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be able to come together, to have a discussion, Lord, to be mindful of what we say and do. Lord, help us to understand that what we say and how we say it and how we deliver it affects people in different ways. So God, I ask that you brighten our tongues, that you help us to listen to those that are speaking. And Lord, I ask that you help us to understand when it's placed there. Be kind to one another and pay close attention and know that those that are speaking have lived that situation or incident. So just be kind. These words we ask in thy name. Amen.
Thank you very much. All right, Council, let's take a look at this week's agenda. It's been a busy day, so we'll go a little bit slower in case anybody needs a little bit more time. We will have a Legislative Committee meeting this afternoon, and we will have a special presentation by Chris Hopkins. In fact, Chris is already here. Council, would it be all right with you if we go ahead and do that before we review the agenda? Chris, would you join us, please?
By unanimous consent. I like that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you all again. I appreciate very much the opportunity to serve in this role as your representative to the Chattanooga Police and Fire Pension Fund. We got a chance to look at a couple of things earlier today, but I just wanted to give you the first quarter update report. And in doing so, I thought I might take five minutes or so for some of the newer members of Council who haven't really had an opportunity to hear from me or maybe haven't had a chance to really dig too deeply into the pensions. So maybe just a couple of basics, if that's okay. Let's see. If we can get this to advance. There we go. All right. So just by way of introduction, the Chattanooga Fire and Police Pension Fund was actually founded in 1949. Remarkably, there are three paid administrators who worked for the fund. Katrina Abbott is our fund administrator, and she's here with us tonight. The fund is run by a Board of Trustees of eight members, six of whom are sworn officers, three from the police department, three from the fire department. They are elected by their peers to serve a six-year term. So I cannot stress how much. I am always impressed by their dedication and the time and the effort they put into this, to this role. In addition, there's one city council appointee, that is myself. I serve at your pleasure. And then the mayor also appoints one member of the pension fund committee. So what is the role of the pension trustees? What's the role of the Board of Trustees? Well, first of all, it's overseeing the pension fund administration, and that includes we're required, we act as a fiduciary to the plan beneficiaries. So we're required to make sure that all the laws and regulations are followed, that we act in accordance with the best interests of the participants in the fund. Those are the firemen, the policemen, the retired fire and police, and their spouses and other beneficiaries. That's our role as fiduciaries. That's our legal obligation. And every decision we make in our board meetings, whether it has to do with policy or investments, we never lose sight of that. So we, in addition to just following the rules and regs and the laws, we also direct the investments of the fund. And so we can talk a little bit more about how we do that. We have a third-party consultant who brings us recommendations and research. But ultimately, it's up to the Board of Trustees to vote on recommendations from the pension consultant. We have a broadly diversified investment portfolio. I'd be happy to get into a little more detail at some other time, maybe in a work session. We can dig down in the details a little bit when you all have some time and take a look at some of the more detailed reporting. That's what we do as the fund trustees. I'd also probably just take a second to make it clear that the Fire and Police Pension Fund is what's called a defined benefit plan. And that is to say that their benefits as retirees are based upon their work history and their salary history. They make a contribution to the plan in addition to the city's contribution. But then, once they retire, they are essentially guaranteed a certain income for the rest of their lives and the lives of their beneficiaries if they so choose. That differs from a defined benefit or defined contribution plan like a 401K, 403B, 457, where the employee puts the money into the plan. The employer may match some of that, but it's entirely up to the employee, the participant, to decide how that money is invested. And their income in retirement is going to be a function of how well they did over their lifetime at in saving and investing that money. Big difference between those two types, excuse me, two types of plans. So the Fire and Police Pension Fund itself is a defined benefit plan, meaning the benefit is locked in by a formula. Here's a look at some of the challenges we face when we operate defined benefit plans. You may have had a grandparent who worked for General Motors or Ford or Chatham or who knows what, who retired after 30 years, got a gold watch and a pension. That's a rarer animal these days, much, much rarer. In fact, exists primarily in the public sector. So you can see that top line is the growth of 401Ks and 403Bs as a percentage of the workforce. The green line on the bottom is the decline in participation in defined benefit plans. There's some reasons why that's declined. There's been some challenges to supporting these plans. As you can see, that top line, defined benefit plans, that's public administration. So that's going to be cities, municipalities, police and fire departments. That's primarily where we see these plans now. Everything else, defined benefit plans have largely ceased to exist. So why has that happened? Well, one of the challenges we have with a defined benefit plan is we're all living longer. So remember that when someone retires from the City of Chattanooga or the Chattanooga Fire Department, they have a known benefit for the rest of their life. And the rest of their life is much longer than it used to be. This graph here kind of gives you an idea. Going back to basically 1960, the average life expectancy at birth was 69 years old, a little less than 70. When the Chattanooga Fire and Police Pension Fund started, the average life expectancy at birth was closer to 67 years old. For somebody who was already 65, they were on borrowed time technically. As you can see, life expectancies have risen dramatically, about 10 years on average. So now, a defined benefit plan like our Fire and Police Plan has to provide for 10 more years of income payments in retirement, especially if there's a spouse who may live longer than that. So substantial challenge in how these things are funded. Just coincidentally, there's a slight dip in 2020. You might wonder what that is. When we were all wearing masks, there was a, we're just now recovering our life expectancy. I forgot, this slide never shows up quite right. But I can just, we talked about it this afternoon. The darker blue bar is the number of active participants. And I'll just tell you that in that first blue bar in 2014, 10 years ago, we had 850 active police and fire. And we had 772 inactives retired or had left the service. So we had way more active participants than retirees. Flip it around. Now, 2024, the ratio is 1.08. We have 1.08 retirees per every active today. So retirees and inactives have increased by 12% in 10 years. Active participants have declined by 6% over that same period of time. An additional challenge, and along the lines of what we were talking about earlier today, the importance of providing a structure here in Chattanooga that'll attract people to come and work for our police and fire service, and more importantly, to stay. So retention and recruitment, two very important elements of the health of the pension. The illustration I'll give is if somebody has put in 27 years, they're unlikely to leave Chattanooga to go to greener pastures because they're close enough to retirement. Somebody who's 28 may leave for a salary increase. Well, the more younger people who leave and the more retirees who stay, the more unhealthy the plan becomes. So it's, I can't emphasize enough how important retention and recruitment of younger officers can be to the health of the plan, notwithstanding the rest of the decisions we make. By the way, if you have any questions along the line or any comments, I certainly welcome them. I'm gonna skip this slide for a second and just revisit two terms here that we talk about in pension accounting. One is called the actuarial accrued liability. So we take a look at every, every person who's a beneficiary of the plan. Let's say a brand-new recruit who just left the academy and is in year one has not accrued much of a retirement benefit yet because they're only on the job for a year. They don't cost us very much. But somebody who's been here 30 years, we know they've accrued a full benefit. We're gonna have to count that. Anybody who's already retired, we assume, we have some basic assumptions, how long they're going to live, just based on actuarial tables. So we can estimate, what is the total value of the accrued liability, of the pension benefit that's already been earned for people who have put in some time, maybe a full career, maybe only a year? And we take that number and we discount it back to the present in $2025. That number, it's a big number, it's $576 million, is the present value of our pension liability. If we had that much money in the plan today and everything went exactly according to plan, we would be 100% funded. The other number besides the accrued liability is the actual value of the pension. And that number is in the neighborhood of $355 million, so 576, 355. That differential is the unfunded liability that we have to make up over a period of time. Now, we do it over 30 years. And every year, we recompute, and we do it again, and we keep making these adjustments. But that differential, if you take the value of the plan divided by the total liability, that's something called the funded ratio. And that funded ratio, as we sit here today, is about 62%. Thanks again in part to the capital contribution that the mayor and city council graciously provided to us back in February. So anything above 60 is generally considered reasonably healthy. Below 60 is cause for concern. And as I mentioned this afternoon, on a market value basis, we've been as low as 42 or 43% within the last decade or so. So having said that, I'll actually show you the number. I said 62. It's 61.7 at the bottom of that, at that slide. So that $221 million deficit, the plan is to eliminate that year by year over 30 years. We amortize that every year, and then we recompute, and we do it again, and we do it again, and we iterate year in and year out. And so each year, when city councils presented with a recommended contribution, it includes part of, 1/30 of the amortization of that unfunded liability. So does that make sense without getting too much into the weeds, I hope? Now, let me back up to this slide here. So going back to 2006, 2007, I know it's a messy graph, but look at the dark blue line. That's the actual value of the plan assets. And as a percentage of, based on an index number, you can see what happened in 2008. A few of us are old enough to remember something called the financial crisis. Well, the plan lost 32% that year. It was a huge hit to the value of the plan. And since then, we've really essentially been trying to climb out of the hole. So that explains why we're at 60%, 62%, and we're not at 100%. So some of us remember those days. It's a difficult time. And the plan, pension plan, lost a little bit more than the average plan, but everybody took a hit that year. So we've been gradually climbing out. The light blue line is called the actuarial value of the plan. That's, we adjust that. In other words, we didn't, in terms of determining next year's contribution, we didn't come to city council and say, "We need to add 30% on top of everything." We don't make it up in one year. We were asked to make it up over 10 years. And so we've gradually decreased that amortization from 10 to 5. Anyway, without getting too far into the weeds, you can just see by looking at that picture what happens. Every time that line is below zero, it's a negative rate of return. Recently, the last eight or nine years, returns have really been quite good on average over time. And so I'll get to that here and show you kind of an idea what that looks like. So this is, you have a more detailed breakdown, I think, in your packet of the report I submitted. But just to give you an idea, Q1 of 2025, which was the quarter ending March 31st, the fund had a negative return of about 0.3%. After fees, about 0.4% at the bottom line. Compared to a general benchmark, we were pretty close to the mark, a little bit below average, but, but not bad. If you look out in the, at the top line, that 0.3% loss put us in the 66th percentile, which means there were, 34% of the plans were better than, were, were worse than us. We were in the bottom 66th percentile. But if you go to the right-hand side, which really matters, over time, a five-year, we were in the top half. We're above 43. And that's what we want. We want to be at or near the median range for returns, and we would be very happy with that. Our assumed rate of return is 6.75. Over five years, we've averaged 10% net of fees. So we're on the right track. The investments have played out quite well. We're well diversified, about 65% in equities of all kinds, about 20% in fixed income like bonds, and about 15% in conservative, what we call real assets, things like farmland and timber and long, long-return assets are kind of a bond substitute. So very well positioned. It certainly has served us well. And the fact that we've been a little bit behind the eight ball in the, you know, the bottom two-thirds of the funds through three years is all kind of explained by this one chart. The red line is the S&amp;P 500, going back to 2013. The green line is the S&amp;P 500 without seven stocks. And the blue line are those seven stocks. So if you weren't heavily concentrated in that, what we call the magnificent seven, you can probably guess what they are, but they're listed at the bottom. That's Google and Amazon and Apple and Facebook. Tremendous concentration we've never seen. In my career, certainly in my lifetime, I've never seen concentration like this, where the top 7% of the S&amp;P 500 make up 36% of the total market. The other 493 stocks make up the rest. So this is one of those things that we don't believe can last forever. Valuation of these magnificent seven is pretty excessive. We expect at some point to see a reversal in that. And so if you take those seven stocks out, only 25% of the rest of the return comes from the rest of the market. Three-fourths of all the return over the last three years has been from those seven stocks. So we own them, but we don't own them in the same concentration as the big broad index, the S&amp;P 500. Bottom line, I say all that to tell you that we're extremely pleased with the performance of the investments. We're delighted with the performance of our investment consultants from New York who have done an outstanding job and with us about, since 2016, 2017. And we've probably cut away maybe, maybe 80 basis points of annual expenses by changing our investments around. Almost a full percentage point a year, compounded over 30 years is a tremendous amount of money. So everything, I think, is, we're, we're making tremendous progress. Our funded ratio, again, is, as of the end of the year, about 62%. I will just show you one more slide. Right here, where'd it go? Oh, I cut it out, I guess. No, I put it at the end. So I just got preliminary numbers from our investment consultants yesterday. So as of 6:30, our assets are up to $369 million, which puts us at 64% funded ratio on a market value basis. We had a very good year, 11.4% return over the last 12 months, the end of our fiscal year, which is June 30. Had a 7% gain in the second quarter. And $369 million is by far a record watershed level for us. So welcome, any, any questions you may have?
Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, so going back to the S&amp;P 500.
Yep.
Rather than being invested in all those other investment portfolios that you're talking about, I mean, typically, has the S&amp;P 500, not historically, over any 10-year period, had anywhere from 12 to, or 10 to 12% gains?
Yeah, I think if you look back over 30 years, you're probably 9 to 12, something like that. Pick your, pick your spot. The other side of that coin, though, is that with that comes more volatility. And, you know, that you get bigger spikes, you get more ups, more downs. We were more heavily concentrated in that S&amp;P 500 back here because the S&amp;P 500 lost 31% that year. And we were very heavily concentrated, as a pension fund generally, we want to be more diversified by that, like that, so that we don't take those big rides up and down.
But it did bounce back and regain.
It did.
So I guess, I mean, you know, we're, we're in for the long haul.
Exactly.
You know, I understand if you're needing that money within a 10-year timeframe, you probably don't need to invest in that because there's good possibility you'll see a steep decline. But, but over the long haul, it just looks like to me we would be better, I'm not a financial advisor, you are, it looks like we'd be better served in the S&amp;P 500. So that we get that 10% over a 10-year period would be much better shaped than, you know, predicting 6.75 or whatever that was.
I mean, I think it's a fair question, and some of us as individuals may have done that. The problem with, I may use the example of an individual. You know, I'm a, I'm an old guy, and I don't have that much time left to make it up. I don't want to take a 30% hit.
Exactly. And, and like I said, if you're looking at withdrawing that in a short 10-year period, I would say that would not be the wise investment. But we are here, you know, for the long term, and, and we know that in a given 10-year period, we're gonna probably see a 10 to 12% improvement.
And I'll give, I'll give you another example of why that's, can be problematic politically. If we came to you the year after in 2009 and said, "We took a 30% hit," and we tell you what the normal contribution is going to be, and then we tell you, "Oh, we need another 30% on top of that to true up," that's not politically feasible year in and year out for the city to me, making huge swings in their contributions either. The idea is to try to smooth that out over time, both theoretically in terms of the investment returns. So, yeah, you could, you could maybe count on 10% on average. I would actually, I'll back up one more step, and I will argue to you that over a 30-year period, that's, that's true. But any, traditionally, any period of time where you're almost two standard deviations above the mean on valuation of the S&amp;P, so the average valuation is 16 times earnings, we're at 23 times earnings right now. The next five-year return is lower than average. JP Morgan, for example, now. The next five-year return is lower than average. JP Morgan, for example, is predicting 3% to 4% in the S&amp;P for the next five years. Goldman Sachs is even a little worse than that. Because of the return to the mean, right? If something gets overextended, it tends to correct back. Now, if it were possible to look at that in the long run and say, yeah, we know it's a 30-year runway, and we're not going to worry about the fluctuations, which some of us can do as individuals, if we have the constitution for it. But political entities and municipalities typically don't. So the idea is to smooth that over time. Don't try to get a 10% return with the chance that you're going to lose 30 in one year. Shoot for six and three-quarters, which is our bogey, our benchmark, and try to stay within a 10% range of that, and we're still going to get to the same place, but with less of a ride. Now, yeah, it's true, if we were more aggressive over a longer period of time, historically, there'd be more money in the pot, absolutely. But is that something that an elected city council really wants to do? And it's not standard practice with a pension fund. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I think.
I don't disagree with your premise at all. It's just that it's infeasible, I think, to come back on those, you know, back to, you know, we've had more than one down year, right? We've had, since 2008, we had one, two flat years. We had a down year in 18, and we had a pretty good down year in '22. So we'd be coming to you in 2023 and saying, we need to increase our pension contribution by 20% this year.
For that year.
For that year. Now, is that really feasible? You know, I kind of don't think so. But that's standard pension practice.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Now, maybe I'm wrong, and we can, you know, shoot the lights out. That'd be great. I'd enjoy it personally. But another thing I'll mention is just in terms of diversification, we are not, our stocks are not all in the S&amp;P 500. About 20% is, but we have some in international exposure. That's done quite well so far this year. It's outperformed U.S. stocks. Been a long time since that happened, but you never know when it's going to. We have assets in small-cap stocks, which haven't done well for the last few years, but they have a higher rate of return when things are going well. So the portfolio is well diversified across asset classes and styles and even countries. And in fixed income, the same thing, it's diversified. And then we've got a kind of what we call a sweetener with these real assets like timber and farmland that pay a kind of an annual income payment, and they're longer-term assets. But farmland can appreciate quite nicely over a long time with a lot less annual volatility.
Okay.
Not, I mean, I'm happy to.
No, just curious, while we, we hold less work, right? Put it all in a S&amp;P index?
Well, you know, that decision, it comes up every year. It really does.
Reduce our rates, reduce our fees.
But, yeah, and just, you know, we try to, I mentioned one other thing. And again, there's no going back. You don't go back and redo what happened. But there were some decisions made around the '08, '09 timeframe to try to mitigate some of that future volatility, but to pick up a little more return. And we were invested in some hedge funds at the time. Well, hedge funds, as you probably know, have very high fee structures. And instead of us paying 40 basis points all in for our portfolio, we were paying, let's say, 150 basis points, or 2%, or whatever. Some of the hedge funds paid, charged at one time 3% plus 20% of the profits. And for a while, that strategy worked until there were so many of them that they weren't hedging anything anymore. And they just became a drag on performance. So it took us a while to work out of that, but we have done that now. We're very focused on cost reduction and maximizing the return that goes back into the plan. More detail than anybody asked for, I know. I grant you. But anything else I can answer?
Yes, we've got Councilman Elliott next.
I think you answered my question. So this may not be directly towards you. This may be a council and administration direction. I think my biggest concern is this unfunded liability and the constant injection of cash we're asking to consider. Now, before I go any further, I firmly believe that all government employees should have a pension or some type of dedicated retirement waiting for them. You know, a lot of employees do not make market value most of the time. I think that's part of the reason we're having these conversations now with fire and police. I think we pull back the veil. It's probably even more heightened with civilian employees. And so I believe wholeheartedly, like, once you retire, you do your due diligence, you should have some type of fixed amount. But I think we, long-term, should probably look to have conversations of how do we make this sustainable? Because I don't know if this can be, if every time we're turning around, we're dumping $30, $40 million in at the time. So I appreciate your comments. And I'm looking forward, in the future, for us seeing how we can make sure we continue to protect both fire and police, but also civilian retirement benefits. That has to be a priority. We have to take care of our people. But also, how do we be good stewards of taxpayer dollars and make sure we're being sustainable at the same time? That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Your point's well taken. And if I could just respond for a second, if you don't mind. I certainly understand that, and I share your perspective on that. I've been on the pension board now since 2017 or 2018. So this is the first time there's been an actual injection of capital into the plan in my tenure here. The $18 million that we put in early this year, I don't think anybody recalls one prior to that, anytime recently. In addition, each year, and we can, I'm happy to, incidentally, I'm going to make the rounds with the people I haven't met yet. Each year, we do a valuation at the end of the year with our actuary. And the actuary looks at what happened this year with the investments. So last year, investments did better than our benchmark. You know, we did, let's say, as of June 30th, we did 11%. And our benchmark is 6.75%. So we gained some ground this year. That's good. The other thing they do is every five years, they took a look at what's called experience. And it turns out that retirees now are living longer than they did when we made the initial assumption. So that hurts the plan a little bit. But my point, without wandering too far, is that each year, we take a look at this, and we come back to the city, and we propose a contribution that will, as I said, over a 30-year period of time, will amortize away that differential. And I forgot to touch on this, but you can see that based on the January 1 census, we're targeted, we're on a glide path right now to hit 70% by 2020, 2033. That's actually two years sooner than it was two years ago. We've been gaining ground on that. And by 2039, to hit 80%. So we're on a glide path to get exactly where you and all of us want to be. I hope that's helpful. And I'm always happy to get, you know, more detail to you.
No, you're good.
That's what my wife says, no more detail, please.
You're fine.
Thank you. I appreciate your question.
All right, you're good, Councilman?
Yes.
Okay, Chris, thank you very much for joining us in our budget session earlier today. Looks like you have answered all of council's questions for now. Appreciate the work you do on behalf of our city and our first responders.
Well, and for all that you guys do to recognize our first responders. And again, just point of personal privilege, I watch the sworn officers and the diligence they apply to this role. I invite anyone on council to come visit us at one of our monthly meetings. They are open. And I think it would be a useful exercise if anybody's interested in coming down and seeing how we actually do this, how we deliberate and how we make decisions. But it's the sworn officers who do, and the staff, Katrina and her staff, who do all the work. So thank you all again.
Thank you. Okay, Council. We are ready to start discussing our agenda, but first, let's get a motion on the minutes. Thank you, Council. We have a motion on the minutes. Minutes will stand, with a proper second, minutes will stand without objection. Great. Also, just a point of privilege, Madam Vice Chair, thank you for your prayer. Madam Vice Chair and I had a heated discussion at our budget session, and we have continued to have spirited discussion since then. And I just want to say that I try to be very diligent about choosing my words carefully. And sometimes, I still don't choose the right words. And I have asked for Madam Vice Chair's forgiveness and apologize. And there'll be some other folks I'll be talking to as well. But I just wanted to say that out loud, that I do apologize for hurting your feelings.
And I forgive you.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay. So, Council, we have items under final reading. We have a single stare, and we have two planning items under final reading. My intent is to take those planning items as a package unless there is any reason not to. I mean, Madam Vice Chair, we have an item in District 8. Is that one still good to go?
It is good to go.
Okay. And then we have the voluntary incentives program as well. Okay, looks like we're good with that. All right. So moving into ordinances under first reading, we do have the chicken ordinance here. Do we have any conversation about that? Councilwoman Burrs.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Actually, before we move into first reading, I mean, to first reading, I do have a question of procedure, and this has to do with a matter on last week's agenda. So I'm not sure of the proper place to do it, but since it was, would have a guess been in final reading, I want to ask the city attorney a question about an item that was on last week's agenda. Unfortunately, I was not here to, I watched the discussion, but I wasn't here to be part of the vote. And I have a question about procedure. And this is in the matter of the Public Works matter, application number or case number, MR 2025-0055. What's the process for, if there's an applicant? It seems to me that the process should be that regardless of what the vote is going to be or recommendation for that matter, that the applicant should be given the opportunity, or asked if the applicant is present, and then given the opportunity to speak. But I want to check my clarification of that to see what should happen and see if we need to do anything different than what happened last week.
Yes. I was just requesting a little bit of information more from RPA on the process in this one as I was going along.
Okay.
This was a mandatory referral request that occurred initially on, I guess, on January, excuse me, June the 1st, July the 1st? July the 1st. And it was deferred after the agenda session here on that case for two weeks until July the 15th. And then whenever this matter came up on the reading for first reading on July the 15th, there was a request to deny this item. And when it came up for a vote, and there were no further comments or questions, and then the issue was closed after a vote. There was no presentation that I'm aware of during that meeting, at least on the 15th on there. And I guess the issue as far as the applicant being present, I don't know if the applicant was requested to talk or not. I have not reviewed the opportunity to see the meeting yet at this point in time. So that's normally the process, at least give an opportunity for the applicant to be heard if you're going to.
For mandatory referrals?
Usually, yes, I believe. That was done, I believe, on another mandatory referral that day, is what I understood.
And I guess, I don't know if it changes the vote. I think I just want to make sure that we're following the correct procedure if the applicant should be given the opportunity to make comments regardless of what the outcome is.
It wasn't done on another mandatory referral.
Okay.
I have not done that on mandatory referrals.
Mandatory referrals.
But if we need to start doing that on mandatory referrals, we can. But it has not been this body's practice.
Practice to this point.
They are in Public Works, not under Planning. And we do that for Planning items, but we have not done that with Public Works items.
Okay. And all this particular item was involving a request of an applicant who was making a request for, I guess.
Right-of-way abandonment.
Right-of-way abandonment. And the Public Works Department, I guess, on the front end of it, had they made a recommendation to RPA, I'm not sure on that end of it. So that's the issue. It's still up to this council to consider the recommendations that are made to you, and then y'all make a decision. In this case, it was in a public meeting, and it was discussed, and it was voted on. It was not given an opportunity for the applicant to appear.
And I think the, because I went back and watched the video, and for items, at least, I think either, I think the item D under that, the applicant was identified. The applicant was asked, is the applicant present?
It's not a mandatory referral. It was a rezoning.
Okay. So is that the difference, item D? Because it's not, item D under Public Works and wastewater is not?
Item D should have been placed under Planning and wasn't.
Okay.
But it is a planning item, and so it was handled as a planning case.
Gotcha. Okay.
Mandatory referral, as I have always understood them, this is an applicant requesting property to be given to them.
Given to the property owners.
That we own as a city, as opposed to a zoning case that is, a person owns a piece of property or has intent to purchase a piece of property, is asking for different privileges and rights on that property versus being given property.
And at this point, the council has acted on that by vote, and it denied that during that meeting. And that was in a public meeting at that point in time. So the action of the council has been taken, and there is an opportunity for the applicant, if they don't like that, they can go to a court session if they wish. But the decision of the council has been made by vote.
Okay. So just for future reference, if it's, Chairwoman, so if it's a mandatory referral, we don't have the obligation to ask for a presentation or for the applicant to speak or opposition to speak unless we choose to?
It's my understanding that we don't have the obligation.
I don't, is there?
Our attorney can take a look at that and let us know. But we have not historically done that.
Okay. I mean, I think we should look at it, and then if there's any further action, to make sure that the procedure is as fair as possible. I would like to request that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. We'll do that before the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
It's good.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Okay, so that item closed. We are looking at item 8A in legal. I believe that's what I've got some people viewed on the board. So let's see. Councilwoman Dotley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to make just a couple of comments about this one, as it is up for vote today. Just on behalf of District 7, I've received several emails, some not so much in favor, but largely majority in favor. And I'm sure Council Nicole, our clerk, sent out a picture of two of my young constituents holding a sign saying, "Vote for chickens." So, as you, so we have very, a lot of support in District 7 for this ordinance. And I did want to know, and I was mentioning this earlier to Councilman Henderson, that within our discussion of this, which we've been discussing over the last few weeks, sometimes people forget that we live in the city, too. They're like, we are residents of the city of Chattanooga. And so we are impacted by every ordinance and everything that, whether it's taxes, whatever, we too are impacted. This ordinance in particular was one I was glad when Chairman Councilman Henderson brought it back up because it's one that impacts me heavily every day because I live in Eastlake, and there are chickens everywhere. But I'm happy to report that my neighbor, who used to have chickens roaming all over the street since this ordinance, we've been discussing it. They have now fenced it in. They have coops there. So I'm already starting to see improvements just based on us having this, just having the conversation, not even the vote on it or anything. So, and I know there are, you know, everyone has their opinion about it, but I just wanted to report just from the District 7 perspective that those who have reached out, I have majority support from those who have reached out. And also, just I have personally seen improvements because the chickens that were free-roaming, free-ranging on the street in front of my house, they would come in my yard, and I have a little drainage system, so they just drink in the water, living free. So it is really good to know that, you know, even just discussing this has really shifted the narrative around how do you handle that? How do you clean things up and things like that? And so there's not that anymore. And I'm just appreciative of this ordinance, not just as a city council representative, but as a resident of Eastlake. I am glad, and I'm hoping that if this passes today, and if it passes today, that, you know, other districts are able to see those improvements as well. So I wanted to share just my personal experience as a resident of Chattanooga, and also share some feedback that I got from a good majority of residents in District 7. All right. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burrs.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought it up because.
Oh, no, I apologize. No, I was looking at the wrong color. Vice Chairwoman, no.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm going to have to say, my constituents, we're on the other end with you, Councilwoman Dotley. They are still not in support of, and it is my intent to make an amendment to this at the meeting today. So I will So I will, you know, always fight and support the great District Eight. And I will ask that amendment be to exclude the great District Eight from the ordinance. That's it, madam. Thank you.
Councilwoman Burrs.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm in between you all at 50/50. I've heard from several people in my district, and it's about 50/50. And I think the consensus is that most people have nothing against chickens, and I personally have nothing against the chickens. I think the ordinance covers those bases, and we've talked a lot about, you know, the devil's advocate stuff. And I'm certainly in favor of folks having the opportunity to live sustainably. I do still have some concerns about the reality of being able to enforce the ordinance. So that the, and I hope you're right. I hope that, you know, that it does. I've been educated a lot from my constituents, who may or may not already have chickens, who have said, you know, this is how you do it the right way, and if you do it the right way, then it's not a problem. It's just for those that don't do it the right way, how do we protect our constituents who don't want them? And I think that's where, you know, the enforcement piece comes in. I think it looks good on paper, and I think we've covered the basis for enforcement, but it's just a matter of what's the reality of being able to enforce it so that folks can enjoy quality of life on either end of the spectrum. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilman Harvey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have too gotten a lot more in favors of the chicken ordinance than I have opposed. However, I do want to address those who I've gotten opposed, opposition from. My district being a more suburban area rather than rural, you know, to address those concerns of the ones, like I said, who have opposition is the enforcement of this. We, believe it or not, don't have many chickens in East Brainerd, but if we do and if we did, the enforcement was the main concern of my folks in East Brainerd. And so just to speak to the public right now, and my constituents in particular, is we are having a conversation with the administration right now on a better enforcement mechanism. Not entirely sure what that looks like yet, but we've heard your concerns. We want this to work. We want it to be a clean, a clean thing for you to be able to have chickens if you so wish. But we want it to be the right thing. We want to do it the right way. So to address those concerns of enforcement, we are looking at ways, working with the administration on how to do that better. So that's all I wanted to speak to. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hill. I too want to echo the sentiment from Councilman Harvey. In our district, we had some minimum opposition, some in Lake Hills. And I was very fortunate to be able to, in our district, we have a neighborhood leadership council, and we've had conversations with some of our neighborhood leaders. And I just wanted to assess where the chickens were in my district. And like yours, Cody, we are a suburban district as well in District Five, mostly with homeowners, associations that prohibit chickens altogether regardless if this passes. And so in the Highway 58 area, we're protected against that in some cases other than areas like Lake Hills and Washington Hills, who may be outside of that. We don't have a lot in Woodmore, and then in my area in Bonnie Oaks. So we were able to assess about maybe three to four homes that currently have them contained. And I want to remind the public that currently chickens are not permissible. You know, we were, some of us were misinformed on it, at least I was. And I think that this is a piece of legislation that addresses a problem because chickens aren't going anywhere. But what this does is that people who are currently possessing chickens illegally anyway, this allows us to real, so if you're really concerned about chickens, you would support this because this puts the guardrails on the chickens that are currently out of control if it's happening in your area. And then it gives us the opportunity to really take a deep assessment if McCamey can handle the capacity to help enforce it. This piece of legislation also prohibits roosters, which can be the premise of some of our nuisances when it comes to hens and chickens. So I think there are some positive things, Councilman Henderson, that for people who may have issues with it, I think this puts those guardrails on that to regulate that. And for that, the people of District Five, we are in favor of the ordinance as is. So, thank you.
All right, looks like we've got, the board cleared on that. Councilman Henderson, I'll just add a couple of things from the perspective of District Two. I would, I have still continued to have an overwhelming majority of folks who are in favor of chickens. There have been a couple valid points of feedback and concern that I want to share with you. We talked about one of them, which was the number of chickens. And I know you have good reason for the eight. Something that I studied was the Red Bank ordinance and the fact that they have fewer chickens. And one of the things that they, looks to be something that has caused it to be successful is that it's actually a permit process wherein the individual gets a permit and that coop is then checked as part of that permit process. Obviously, that would change the fiscal note of a project like this. And so I understand why you'd prefer not to go the permit route. So that said, I do like within this ordinance the requirement that we look at it any year to see what's working and what's not. And also our conversations with Legal, that this is not, this does not become a vested right that someone then has. So if in a year we say, you know what, eight is too many, we're going to go down to six or four, whatever it might be, this body has the ability to make that change and require a reduction in pets or livestock in this instance. So I think your timing is good, sir. And that's all I have. Okay, so board is clear. If we could head into our Public Works items. Council item B is a mandatory referral in District Two requesting a right-of-way abandonment. And I would request that someone make a motion to defer this item until August 5th. The applicant and I are working on getting together, but I'll just be honest. This budget work is really taking a lot of time, and we have not connected yet. Do we have any other conversation about items C or D or planning item E? Okay. Moving into resolutions, we have a Family Justice Center resolution to apply for and accept a grant. Several appointments and reappointments from the mayor's office. Another special officer armed approval. Under Public Works resolutions, we do have two items. One related to the Orange Grove, and I do have a question about item J. This is the authorization to accept a composting award. Could we please get a little bit more information? It's something that my district has been really intrigued by and excited by.
Good afternoon, councilmembers.
Hi.
So the grant that we're looking at is because we're trying to expand our recycling efforts, and we want to include composting availabilities at our refuse centers in different locations across the city. We're trying to maximize everything that we possibly can with our recycling and get into a much better position for it across the city.
And so this is a, this is an authorization to accept a grant? So you have received this grant?
We have not received this grant yet.
Ah, okay, so typically this would be to apply for and accept if awarded.
Yes.
Which is actually what we have.
We've been rewarded already, so it would have to be approved by council to accept.
Okay, you have been awarded it.
Yes.
Now you just need to, okay, cool, great. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Looks like, oh, we do have a question from Councilman Clark while you're up here.
I'm sorry, Chairwoman Hill, are we having a discussion on Public Works item?
We certainly can, yes.
Gotcha, I'm sorry, I didn't know. I heard you mention it, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, go for it.
Where you're going with it. My question is, I don't know much about this contract, but I know that it has expired. Is that correct? And so when, I think when this was placed on future considerations, it listed a day or per month what we were spending on this contract for solid waste. And we've only extended the contract to September 30th.
Yes, sir.
Do you, what, can you give me some insight as far as what happens after it ends? Or maybe there's something I don't know or?
So the application for the extension is because of the expiration of that already contract. And with the changes that we're trying to make with the recycling efforts, we're looking at how we can incorporate either Orange Grove or other entities to come into the city to help us with the recycling efforts.
So when a contract expires and we approve an extension, does that mean that a bid process is, is a bid process happening on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's a bid process that's in place right now. We've actually put it on hold for the moment because we're looking at changing what Orange Grove does exactly for us. And we're talking with Ms. Roberts about that right now.
Okay. All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Woods. Absolutely.
Okay, counsel, that brings us to the two police items. Two grant applications. Looks like we don't have any questions on those. Let's move to purchases, please. We have, looks like five purchases for today, and we don't have any special RFPs, renewals, emergency purchases or sole source. Please hit your light if you have any questions about purchases. Great. Okay, so moving into next week's agenda then. Final read will have come and gone. We will have discussed those. We will not have any items on first reading next week, but we do have resolutions. So please hit your light if you have any questions on any of these. Library. Some Public Works and wastewater items and a police item. Councilman Elliott.
Yeah, can I get some information on item B, Jay? Just an overview of what this project is?
Could you say it one more time, counsel?
Give me an overview of what this piecework is.
Item D, it's a wastewater resolution.
The wastewater or the B? You said B, right?
B.
Oh, B.
The current, the green grants?
Yes.
Yes, sir. So we are working, our stormwater division will be working with the Chattanooga Food Center in redoing all of the stormwater collection items that they have associated with that location and also removing intrusive plants and things of that sort.
What do you mean, when you're looking at the stormwater?
The entire drainage around there.
Are you going to be replacing it all?
Not all, what needs to be replaced, just.
Okay, isn't it just in that vicinity of their property?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Just all, please, pardon?
Okay, great. Mr. Attorney, do we have everything we need squared away for that certificate of compliance for next week?
We do. There has been a new application prepared with the new address, so yes, we're good.
Okay, great. All right, counsel, let's take a look at our future considerations, please. Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I have lost it now. Mr. Woods? Oh, well, you know what?
Looking at the Wauhatchie Pike.
This is, yeah, this is under the city attorney. Never mind, for some reason I thought it was Public Works. What is the pin and it gives a number? What is that? The Wauhatchie Pike Browns Ferry Road on SR 2?
I'm sorry, which number are we dealing with?
9A.
9A.
What is that dealing with?
It must be 9A today. Oh, okay. I do not know. And it's for our office, and it's authorizing the mayor to do a proposal. Oh, we have received from the state of Tennessee two large project requests here that include maps. I'll be glad to provide those to you in there. But they are two large references for state projects that are going to be done. And they were asking for, I guess, the approval of the mayor to sign off on those on a typical T-DOT-type agreement. And so I have those for that area, which involves an area from US 41 from Wauhatchie Pike to Browns Faries Road that is involved. There's also another one here that involves a rockfall mitigation process route here. I believe that's in Hickson. And then there's another one that involves another rockfall mitigation route. And those documents are just simply a request from the state for us to sign off on those agreements to occur.
For that work to occur?
Yes, sir. That work to occur by the state.
I know at one time they were, we were talking about widening this portion of, well, 41, it's Cummings Highway.
Yes, sir.
It was four lanes. We took it down basically to three with a turn lane. And then I know there was some talk about widening that. So this pin number that we're authorizing the mayor to sign off on is a construction drawing, is that what it is?
Construction drawing by the state, yes, sir.
Can you send that to me?
I would be glad to, yeah. It's a big document on here. I'll be glad to do that, or, you know, if you want to come by and we'll talk about it.
Okay.
All right, no problem. I'll send it to you, what I can, on the PDF.
Okay.
Yes.
If you'll do that, I mean, if it's got drawings, I can probably determine from that if that's what it is.
Yeah, it was a whole wad.
Yeah, I don't need all the engineering and
Just need the location mainly.
Specifications, but just, I guess, the overview of it.
Okay, I'll do that. And for any of the council members that want it, I'll make copies.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Do we have any other future considerations, questions? I will note that the confirmation of Terry Knowles' as fire chief is on, is anticipated to be on the August 5th agenda. All right, I think that we are all set. I'm going to hand this over to Madam Vice Chair to chair our legislative committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Called the order, the legislative committee. May I have approval on the minutes? Thank you, so many stands approved. We have one item open for discussion today. It is the senior tax-free program that is being brought before us by Councilman Elliott. So turn it over to you.
It feels weird being down here. No, in all seriousness, thank you all for this opportunity to present this. Before I get started, this is something that was really, it was something I talked about a lot on the campaign trail, and I thought it was going to be much more difficult to initially get some traction on it. And I was incredibly excited when I talked with Justin in our Treasury Department and Darren Leffler, the mayor's office. Thank you both for your help with this. And so this is what I present to you guys today. So we're going to be talking about expanding our income limits for the senior tax-free program. In particular, we're going to be talking about increasing those limits from the roughly about $49,000 to the state maximum of $60,000. Talking about how this can benefit many of our communities and our seniors. So pretty much what is a tax-free program? I think sometimes people get this confused with the tax relief program, which we'll discuss a little bit later on. But this is for those residents who are 65 years and older. It allows them to lock in their Um, it, it allows them to lock in their um, their tax bills and prevent it from increasing, whether that's from assessment or increased tax rate. Uh, they are required by law, uh state law, to reapply every year. And currently, there's no cap on uh number of applicants. So here's where we are currently versus what the state is allowing. Uh, we are at, the limit is currently forty-eight thousand to uh fifty. The state allows us to have that option to move it up to sixty thousand dollars. In twenty twenty-three, the General Assembly passed this law. Uh, we just not, we, we have yet to tap into this uh local option to increase it. That's what we're looking to do today. Um, why is this important? Um, you know, I, I say this often to my district, um District Nine. I, I, District Nine is on the cusp of having a lot of growth and development in small pockets. We're also the district that has received, like many of us, a huge spike in assessments this year. Uh, we've received the most with an average of sixty-three percent. And um, it's about how can we make sure that our uh, some of our most vulnerable citizens can age in place, right? I tell my folks often, uh, that, you know, development and growth is not bad as long as it makes sense for your neighborhoods, right? I do not want my people to wake up one day and they could no longer afford to live in the communities they've called home forever. Their homes may be paid off, but those tax bills are gonna continue to rise. Those assessments are gonna continue to dictate what that looks like. And so a lot of it is out of their control. So this is really why we're pushing this. What you'll see, a lot of people don't make um below forty-nine thousand dollars a year anymore. That's not a lot of money. Inflation's growing up, uh, continuing to increase. We don't know what's gonna happen with some of uh our benefits, such as Social Security and Medicaid. There's a lot of uncertainty. And this increase in this of sixty thousand dollars allows some of those more middle-income folks who have fixed incomes to make sure that they can live with a peace of mind and stay in their homes. Uh, so this, this kind of reiterates it. It helps uh make sure, especially in the middle of affordable housing crisis, if somebody does get displaced, where they're gonna go. You're lucky if you can afford a home in Chattanooga. I, I'm a prime example. I still rent. I still cannot afford to buy a home in my own district just yet, which is troubling. And I have the ability to have more flexible income, but if you have somebody that's retired or have other uh aspects that's out of their control uh due to aging, it puts them in a pinch. Um, especially in our communities are oftentimes overlooked. So um, I wanted to circle back to something I mentioned earlier, the difference between the tax freeze and the tax relief. We have no control over the tax relief program. That's out of our hands. The only thing we're talking about in this instance is tax freeze, which will allow you to lock in your property taxes at a certain uh, at the rate it is when you apply. And um, we're gonna be able to fluctuate those income levels. And so if you have more questions about tax relief versus relief, uh freeze, we can talk about that later. Uh, here's a little bit on a fiscal note. Um, anybody who applies, um, I mean, qualified, they can apply, right? It's open to anybody. There's no cap. Last year, we had uh seventeen hundred applications and about sixteen hundred uh were approved. Uh, we abated uh last year about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in taxes. So that's just extra taxes that we just did not take in. And we have been looking at budgets for the last three or four months. And I think we all agree that it is a drop in the bucket compared to what we're looking at. That's, that's one project right there that can go and impact a lot of folks. Now, here's what we cannot tell. We, because we do not have adequate data on our citizens' income, we cannot tell what this looks like once we pass it. Um, I hope that the floodgates open and many more seniors take advantage of this, right? That they can lock themselves at a tax uh uh rate and they're not impacted by future outcomes, right? Um, that's my hope, because first and foremost is about taxing, I mean, protecting our seniors. And I promise I'm being in and out, so any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Um, it's lit up. Councilman Harvey.
Oh, you got Dennis.
Oh, I'm sorry.
See.
Okay, I'll take it, I'll take it.
They get me and Dennis confused too.
Okay.
Thank you, brother.
Well, you are, on the, on the thing issue.
Okay. Oh, 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 do you wanna?
No, go ahead.
All right, uh, Councilman Elliott, thank you for this very crucial um piece of legislation. Um, and I support it full-heartedly. I think this is probably passed. I didn't even realize that we could have raised the, taken advantage of that. So thank you for finding that and bringing it to our attention. One of my questions I'd like to ask you, and this might be a technical question that might need to be deferred to the body that processes the application.
They're here.
Is that, I'm sorry?
They're here.
Okay, great. Uh, can you take advantage of both the tax freeze and the relief? And I have two more of the subsequent questions after that.
Yes, you can.
Yes, you can. I like y'all, I know who you are, but I like you. Let me ask you some questions about the fiscal note.
Yep.
By district. If you, this might have to be a fact-finding uh mission for you. Um, will we look at, do we know, I don't know if there's a way to know this, but so you have the, if we can go back to that screen where it shows the, I think it's forty-three thousand.
Is this the one?
It's for, whatever the, the minimum is now, forty-three thousand or forty-eight thousand. Do we know how many people could potentially come into this program once we raise the maximum up to sixty thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's difficult. You know, you could use census track data.
Yeah.
Uh, if we were a state that provided uh, that had a
State income tax.
State income tax, we may be able to, be able to do, uh, predict that a little bit more effectively, but we don't.
Okay.
Right? We don't track our citizens' incomes, and so it's hard to predict. But what I'll say, you know, looking at those who applied now, that's a drop in the bucket. And this is one of those things where we're still gonna be receiving taxes in some form or fashion, but you're making sure you're protecting those seniors at a much more, at the rate they are now and leaving them out, um, taking them from any fluctuations in the future.
And do you know from their office, how, how in these districts, in our districts, who's taking advantage of the program the most? Like, do we know if, like, say, District Five is the lowest beneficiary of the current tax freeze? Like, do we have that data?
I, I didn't research it uh for this presentation, but if you'll give me some time, I'll work with our Treasury to see if we can pull that.
And last but not least, uh, Council, uh Vice Chair, Councilwoman, my name's like, like blurred. Um, we, this week, I can't, I don't know, was it this week? Uh, last week, we, we were presented with information regarding the pre, the reappraisals. And we learned um through some information which districts saw the largest percent change in property values. And my, my district, yours, uh, District Five saw probably the second highest or equal to some other ones at fifty-six percent. Yours saw the highest in our community at sixty-three percent.
Yep.
And then our neighboring districts, District Eight and Six, also saw some, what I would describe as some disproportionate, but understandable that this rate is dictated by home sales, which we learned today. And I guess my question I'd like for you to explain, for those of who are concerned, uh, you know, when we, we can't, we don't do appraisals as we know by demographic or consider median income levels. But the pink elephant in the room is that if districts like mine's have the highest percent change in property values, and my demographic is a predominantly African-American district, um, with an overwhelming amount of, of females, you know, how will this impact that? Because I see, you know, some of our Woodmore residents here, you know, Dwight Smith, who's a community activist here, who I've shared this with. And, you know, yes, this captures growth, but who does it impact in a disproportionate way that we have to be prepared? And how does this program help with those seniors who may be trapped in that impact zone just because of their property values have gone up significantly?
I, I'm gonna say this, you know, um, this age group that we're talking about, sixty-five years and older, is the fastest-growing age demographic in our country. And in a time where everything's getting more expensive. And we do not know what's gonna happen with the stability of our economy from one week to the next. When we are having very tough conversations as a body about how do you provide adequate pay to your first responders? But how do you limit that tax burden on your citizens? Um, those are tough conversations. And the state does not give us a lot of tools in our tool belt to protect people when it comes to housing costs. We can't do rent controls, can't do taps, um, caps on uh, uh, sales of homes. We just can't do it. This is one of the few things that we can do to protect our citizens. And while we have that door open, we, I, I believe it would behoove us not to take full advantage of it. You ask who does it impact? It impacts people like your dad. It impacts those who I just left today at Glenwood Community Center, those seniors who will come here and pop them fans and out dance you quicker than you can blink. Those who have helped build this city and make it what it is. Those are the people we stand, whose shoulders we stand on. Those folks who have fixed incomes, who no longer work, no longer can work, or really no longer should work because they have paid their debt to society. Those are the people that I'm looking to protect. I, like you, have a majority-minority district. I don't think I'm second behind yours. I also have some of Chattanooga's more affluent neighborhoods, but I also have some of our most forgotten communities as well. And so for me, oftentimes, this is a um, a uh bit of a tight rope we gotta walk. But I'm gonna give you an example. Um, I'm using my community as Missionary Ridge. A lot of times, people look at Missionary Ridge, say, oh, they got folks up there with none but money. But if you go up there, a lot of those families have been there for generations. Long before it cost a million or two dollars to buy a home up there, those have been families that have lived there. Two, three, four generations lived in the same homes. I think about people like them. I think about folks like Granny, who owns a thrift store in Eastdale. Um, I think about all the folks whose doors I've knocked on uh throughout this campaign, who frankly, and we'll put this out here, who the vast majority of voters who turns out in our elections are that. Um, those are the people we need to represent and advocate for.
Gotcha. Thank you, Councilman Elliott. Uh, Madam Chair, you're back.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Burris, you're next.
Thank you again for bringing this to the forefront. I learned about this uh, uh, the tax freeze when a, a constituent of mine contacted me because she was getting these letters saying her taxes were delinquent, and she was part of the tax uh freeze program. So I'm in favor of, of your resolution. And I would like for us to also work with the department that uh manages this to make sure that we're communicating well with the people who meet the requirements for this. That, uh, because the way I understand the process, and whoever's here from finance can confirm that, that the, the process is, I understand it, is the constituent gets their tax bill and the amount that they meet the requirement for is what they owe, and then they have a balance which is paid by the state. Is that correct? Okay. But the state doesn't pay it right away, so it looks like that person, that property owner, is delinquent going on several months, and they may get a letter from the city that says, you're delinquent. So I'd like to see how we can kind of bridge that gap in communication as we move forward, since this has been brought to our attention. Um, so that if I'm, if I'm the, the person, I pay my piece, I may get a letter from the city that says, and I'm giving it kind of the wrong wording, but uh, your check has been received. We are waiting for the state to pay their balance. Do not panic. Because I think as we communicate this uh resolution and it gets more out to the communities, because I think Neighborhood Services does a good job of uh communicating the tax-free program through neighborhoods. Um, as we continue to communicate this more, encourage people to take advantage, I'd hate for it to cause this swell of panic to your office, which I know you all had calls, like, so there's gotta be a programming thing where we can make, do better. That's all I'm saying, since we, we brought this to the attention of the council.
This is where the treasurer's office kind of gets caught in the middle between the state law and what we want to do for our residents. State law says I have to give them a pasting notes. If there's a balance due, I'm first to send it. We do our due diligence to try and remove all the tax relief, tax freeze applicants.
Okay.
Uh, because we're waiting on the state to pay or waiting on the United Way program to pay, which we try our best. This year, we failed. I failed because it, it fell on my shoulders. I'll take the responsibility. Um, so that's what we're working for, for next year as well. Because I'm, I have to make sure the state doesn't say, you didn't do this. But I also have to make sure that the residents fully understand that you've already paid your portion. The state hasn't paid theirs, United Way program hasn't paid theirs, so kind of just bear with us. Um, we do, if, if at any point in time interest occurs on all this, per state law, I have the right to take it off. So that's what we did. Once those payments come in, we remove the interest, we post the state payments, and they're paid in full.
And thank you. I was, I was not trying to point blame. I just knew that it came up, and I talked to the nicest person in your office one day when I took a situation down there. He did a great job of explaining it to me, and I understood that you all, you know, you all had to field all those calls. I'm just thinking, with today's technology, i- if there's a way to earmark those folks, even if they get a statement, all of them get, have a note on it that say, you know, thank you for paying your portion, we're, this is the past due amount, but you don't owe it, the state does. I mean, if you have to send a notice. So thank you for all you all are doing, and thanks for addressing it.
And we are working with our vendor to try and get this process.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
You good?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Councilwoman Dotless?
Yes, uh, thank you so much, Councilman Elliott, for bringing this legislation to us. Um, and so, uh, just a question regarding, as I've asked about legislation, um, how would this physically impact the city? Like, what's the fiscal no loness? What do we, is it gonna cost us anything extra to do this program?
So there's no cost. You just forego the additional margins on the taxes, right? Um, if for whatever reason, we have another thousand applicants apply and they get locked into their tax rate as they are at that moment. And let's say mayor's office uh brings up a proposal to increase taxes by umpteen amount. They get that locked in, they don't feel that extra tax burden because they got locked in before the taxes increased. Uh, so there's no cost to the city. We're just foregoing or abating uh whatever those margins are.
All right, and uh, and this, and this aligns us with the state, is that correct?
This is state mandated, uh, state mandated program.
All right, thank you so much. That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilman Elliott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, here.
So I, first clarifying question, uh, and thank you, Councilman Elliott, for bringing this. Um, certainly a great time to be discussing it. Um, so the, there was the statement, the state has not paid their payment. Help, help me understand how that worked, because my understanding was we freeze it, and to your point, we just don't capture any growth in the future. Is that a different program that the state is making us whole in a different way?
I'll pass it on to Roberta.
Okay, um, the state portion comes on the relief side.
This is not a tax relief program, so this is not that.
Well, I know that, but that's usually where the state payments are delayed on, is because the applicant can apply for both tax freeze, tax relief. So the freeze freezes their taxes. We provide that information to the state. The state says, okay, this is still all we're gonna pay. It's like for last year, it was a hundred and twenty-six something. So the applicant who is on both programs will get a voucher that says you owe this portion, the state owes this portion. portion, the state owes this portion. The free, it's not gonna affect the freeze applicant, application at all, because if all you're on is tax freeze, you have to pay your taxes in full. Now, being on tax freeze also gives you the option to be on the United Way program for the stormwater fees. That can cause a little bit of a delay as well because of the fact that we have to get it to United Way and then get the payments back. But when the state is delaying in their payment, it's usually because that applicant is on both programs.
Okay. So it was my understanding that the city of Chattanooga, we have a tax freeze program and that the county has a tax relief program. Are you saying that the city of Chattanooga also has a tax relief program?
Yes.
Tell us more about that tax relief program.
The tax relief program is where the state of Tennessee will pay a certain portion of their taxes on the resident's behalf.
So, so actually, the city of Chattanooga has a tax freeze program. The state has a tax relief program that can be used toward the city of Chattanooga taxes.
Yes.
And then the county has a tax relief program that can be used for county taxes.
Yes.
So you are adminis- you are dealing with the state on a state program, but we have one tax freeze program in the city that we, that impacts our revenue, that we as a count- uh, as a council make a decision on.
That's the freeze program, yes.
Okay. And the relief program that you're discussing is actually a state program.
It, well, they're both technically a state program. Uh, the county opted not to do the freeze. They opted to do another, they went a different route, to where the city opted to do the tax freeze.
Okay.
And by doing the tax freeze, it then took us from one program to two and now we're on three, if you count United Way. So the tax relief, it is a state program. Both city and county cooperate in it. If they apply, if there is a city residence, we tell them to make sure they apply on the county side as well.
Okay, okay.
The freeze is strictly for city residents only.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. I was getting confused with the state part. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So the other question I have, um, Councilman, the total city tax abatement last year is listed at one thirty-six. Uh, and so I was thinking that's kind of our, our fiscal note, as it were, but to your point, it's, we're just, we're freezing it, not, not, uh, capturing growth. But in our documents from last week for, uh, the budget, the administration asserted that the senior tax freeze program costs us four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year. So what is the, because I have, I have a document, I, I, we have the presentation that listed as body of work that says it costs four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And then I have a spreadsheet that says in senior tax freeze program, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So the, the number is the same. So where did your number come from versus their number?
I don't know where that number came from. Uh, it's maybe an administration question? Somebody from the budget office?
It's the session two reference material, Budget Review Workbook, Body of worksheet, row seven.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that that was the tax relief number. Weston is on vacation, um, so I can't say that for sure, but if memory serves, that's what it was. Does anybody else remember?
It was, I think it was mislabeled. It was the tax relief, not the senior tax freeze.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
Let me see if I can get somebody to get a definitive answer from finance before we wrap this.
Okay. Yeah, that would be really helpful for us to understand if, because if we're, you know, if we're at four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar liability, then it could grow to more than.
But Chief Chambers said he'll pay for it. There was a problem. He just told me right here.
When we hold that military.
Yeah. He said, I'm gonna get raises anyway. He said, I got it.
Okay, cool. All right. Well, just some clarity on that. I mean, I, I was astounded when I saw one thirty-six and I agreed. It's a no-brainer and so, thank you very much.
Of course.
Are you good, Madam Chair?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. So, Councilman Hawes.
I'm sorry. I thought Laura's. Can I, can I jump back in real quick?
Sure.
So Weston, who is, he must be watching from vacation. Hell of a vacation, Weston. Um, he says that, uh, the four fifty-five is the United Way program.
The United Way?
So that's, that must be money that we are allocating over.
Stormwater relief?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
So, so would, changing this, is there a tie?
Mm-hmm. Oh, me.
Well, maybe for both of you. The United Way program that is a stormwater relief program is four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Would, I guess must be because we include renters must be eligible for that as well, for it to be so disparate.
I, I'm gonna be honest, I did not research United Way stormwater program.
Yeah, and I would understand why you wouldn't. Um, but if you could, it would be helpful for us to understand, if we raise this to sixty thousand dollars, is that United Way program tagged to, who qualifies for the senior tax freeze program? Because that would increase that money as well.
Can y'all help us figure that out?
Just depending on how that is written.
If, if you apply and are approved for any other, either tax relief or tax freeze, there is an application, and if you're approved, you're automatically approved for United Way. So if you get an increase in applications on freeze, they are now eligible for United Way. So that number will go up.
Okay.
Okay? And this is only for homeowners, no renters. It's just for homeowners.
The stormwater is also only for homeowners?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay.
And I'll make this, reiterate this point again. We don't know, it's hard to predict how it will increase, because, you know, we don't have data on our city's income limits. And, and I'll be honest, I didn't research the stormwater piece, but I'll see what, I'll work with finance to see if they can cook up some type of projections.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, if, depending on what kind of liability that potentially creates for us, do we need to look at something in the middle? You know, to step us there, see what year one looks like, year two looks like?
I see what you're saying. Um.
Just a question, I don't know, just since we don't know what the.
And, and I, I'll work with them to create those scenarios, but I still stand by and stand on a property tax bill will outweigh a stormwater bill any day. And, you know, I don't see many people being forced out of their homes to not being able to pa- uh, pay a stormwater bill.
But.
But I, I hear what you're saying about being fiscally responsible, uh, to that point. And we can see what that looks like.
Yeah, I mean, knowing that we're only, that it only costs us a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to abate the tax, but it costs four hundred and fifty-five for the stormwater, clearly stormwater is more expensive than property tax monthly.
And I'll be honest, I don't know where all that money goes. Um, like, I think there was even some confusion as to what it was in our budget book. So I think we need to have a better understanding exactly, where does that four hundred and fifty-five dollars go toward? Does it all go towards the stormwater fund and does it all get exhausted every year? Is that some question? Uh, because.
Is it allocated versus is it?
Yes.
Is it distributed?
Exactly.
Ah, yeah, great question. Okay.
So, those are things we have to consider.
All right. Councilman Harvey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you, Councilman Elliott, for bringing this, uh, up. I have to say, I'm, I'm a little jealous I didn't think of it first.
You gotta be quicker than that.
Well, as you know, uh, my day job is, is taking care of seniors and assisted living. And so this is a, um, frequent topic that we talk about, is their, uh, their fixed income, um, and people are getting older and it's harder to afford things. So, um, I just want to say thank you, because we are, uh, getting ready to see the silver tsunami, as, uh, they're calling it. Um, just to give you an example, in 2020, there were about fifty-five million people who turned sixty-five. Near 2030 will be about seventy-three million. So, uh, we're, we're looking at quite a, quite a few more, uh, baby boomers and seniors who, uh, uh, can, can take advantage of this. So, uh, I just want to say thanks and I, I think this is a great thing.
Yep, thank you, sir.
Are you good? Okay, Councilwoman Burris.
I just have one more quick question for finance, uh, the financial side of it. Is there a, is the income level the same for tax relief as it is for the tax freeze? It's like thirty-six thousand, is that, that's, is that where?
Yeah, the relief is much lower and it is set by the state.
Okay. So just because somebody, uh, meets the requirement for the tax freeze, doesn't necessarily mean they'll meet the requirement for the tax relief because their income may be too high? Is that correct?
Yeah. That is correct. If they, yes, if they qualify for freeze, does not mean they're gonna get relief.
Okay.
But if they did qualify for relief, they can automatically get freeze.
Okay. So the se- and then same for stormwater? If they automatically apply for relief, then they can get stormwater and freeze? Okay, thank you.
Okay, are you good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, uh, Attorney Knoblet has the floor. Go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that this process at least is discussed in relation to history. Uh, I'm a history major originally and that's the reason I'm looking at these matters this way. And, uh, this was actually adopted in the budget ordinance back in 2017, which is the reason that we have a tax, uh, freeze program in effect at this point in time. And by ordinance, the ordinance specifically authorized the, uh, the city, uh, to utilize the numbers that are in Tennessee, uh, state law at sixty-seven five seven oh five, provided people meet all the qualifications, requirements and procedures that are contained therein as amended from time to time. Well, over the years, the state has increased the amount that is eligible for this program and it's up to the sixty thousand dollar number right now. So, so what will be considered at some point by the council here when this, this comes up is an application form basically that is increasing the amount to that sixty thousand dollar number. And that application form is pretty much in depth regarding, uh, the person's name, their property information, what their income level is, and the income level of folks that are living in the house, and they have to swear to those numbers and that gets reviewed by the state. And once that application is reviewed, then an individual can have that freeze at that amount if this council adopts that, that new number.
Okay. So the freeze is only for city taxes? So that needs to be made clear?
Correct.
Not county, just city?
No.
Okay.
Correct.
So.
And I'll say this, I, I guess the only person we have left to thank from 2017 is Councilman Henderson. You're the, you're the only one left, so we appreciate you.
That's a total fault.
Oh, Councilman Leford, I forgot.
Yeah.
He's been very helpful. I will say this, I do want to thank, uh, Deputy Chief of Staff Darren Leford. He has been tremendously helpful with this, and the mayor's office, uh, the finance team, uh, Chairwoman Hill, thank you as well for helping me get this on there. Councilman Noah, I know it was a headache trying to get this scheduled, but thank you. And Nicole, Nicole's probably registered on me as well. And Phil, I called Phil on vacation, so thank y'all for making this happen.
So at this point of the presentation, what would your, your pleasure be? There were still some questions that needed answers, so do you want to?
I, I would like to see if we go ahead and put this on the August fifth agenda and, uh, we'll work to get those, uh, questions answered, um, in the meantime, if that's fine.
Okay, Madam Chair, are you good with that? Okay. Then that's what we'll do. We'll place it on.
Thank y'all so much.
You're so welcome. All right, we will recess until five fifty. All right, we will recess until 5:50.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, we are back in session everybody. Welcome back.
Yay.
Madam Clerk, will you please read item 7A for us?
An ordinance to amend the Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 10, Section 10, 3, relating to amendments to the 2018 International Building Code regarding single exit stairways.
Counsel, we have a motion on the floor with a proper second. Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor with a proper second. Do I have any questions or comments? All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're going to take planning items B and C together, Madam Clerk.
Item B, an order to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance to restore his own property located at 1614 East 17th Street from RN2 residential neighborhood zone to TRN2 transitional residential neighborhood zone, suit of certain conditions. Item C, an order to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance to add the voluntary incentives program.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 8A.
An order to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 7, Section 7, 107, and Chapter 7, Section 7, 145, relative to urban chickens.
Councilman Henderson.
Move to approve version 10.
Okay, Counsel, we have a motion on the floor with a proper second. I have Councilwoman Noel. Do we have any questions, comments?
I do. Madam Chair, I would like to place an amendment with that. Attorney Field, how would that be worded for District 8 to be excluded from there?
There would need to be an amendment to the provisions of the, uh, uh, rules of the code, just simply saying that it would exclude District 8 from the requirements of this ordinance. If you can get that as a motion and a second, and vote on that as an amendment.
I move for that to be as a motion, as what Attorney Field said in reference to excluding the great District 8.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend item A by adding language to exclude the great District 8 from the ordinance. District Eight from the ordinance. Do I have a second? All right, motion to amend will not move forward, we do not have a second. All in favor of approving item A?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So we have two noes. Yes, thank you. So, doing numbers in my head here, okay, so seven to two, thank you.
Seven to two, approved.
Okay. Item B.
An ordinance closing and abandoning the unopened right-of-way in the unit block of Chamberlain Street, as shown on the attached maps.
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you, and let's move to defer that until?
August fifth.
August fifth, thank you very much. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to defer this item until August fifth with a proper second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C.
An ordinance closing and abandoning the unopened right-of-way located in the two-hundred block of West Twenty-seventh Street, as shown on the attached maps, subject to certain conditions.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D.
An ordinance closing and abandoning the unopened right-of-way located in the six-hundred block of North Crest Road, as shown on the attached maps, subject to certain conditions.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E is a planning item. Go ahead.
An order to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-Eight, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at twenty-one oh five Randolph Street, from IH Heavy Industrial Zone to TRN three transitional residential neighborhood zone.
Thank you. This is planning item twenty-two-five-zero-zero-eight-eight. Is the applicant present? Do we have any opposition present? Councilman Elliott, this is in your district, would you like a presentation?
No.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving into resolutions, item A, please.
A resolution authorizing the Family Justice Center to apply for and, if awarded, accept the FY twenty-five OVW grants to prevent and respond to violence against children and for youth program funding from the U.S. Department of Justice for an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars, and the forms will pass through for an amount not to exceed two hundred sixty thousand dollars to Willoughby and Farms, as more fully described herein.
Move to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Hit your light if you have any questions or comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Madam Clerk, I would like to take items B through G as a package, please.
Item B, the resolution confirmed Ma'Kellie's reappointment of Takora Johnson-Petersen to the Head Start Governing Board for a term beginning on August twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, and ending on August twenty-three, twenty-twenty-seven. Item C, a resolution confirmed Ma'Kellie's reappointment of Joyce Jackson to the Head Start Governing Board for a term beginning on August twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, and ending on August twenty-three, twenty-twenty-seven. Item D, a resolution confirmed Ma'Kellie's reappointment of Jeffrey McLendon to the Chattanooga Housing Authority for a term beginning on June one, twenty-twenty-five, and ending on May thirty-one, twenty-thirty. Item E, a resolution confirming Ma'Kellie's appointment of James Richards to the Wastewater Regulations and Appeals Board for a term beginning on July twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five, and ending on July twenty-two, twenty-twenty-nine. Item F, a resolution confirming Ma'Kellie's reappointment of Mark Harrison to the Wastewater Regulations and Appeals Board for a term beginning on January twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five, and ending on January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-nine. Item G, a resolution confirming Ma'Kellie's appointment of Roland McLendon to the Community Advisory Committee, standing for GA, Region Nine, for a term beginning on July twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five, and ending on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-eight.
Thank you very much. Counsel? Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Are any of the folks who have been appointed or reappointed here with us today, looks like they're all hard at work, doing all the things to help us at the city, thank you for your leadership, I appreciate you. Item H.
A resolution authorizing the appointment of Chattanooga Housing Authority Public Safety Officer, specifically Investigated Joseph Goulet, as a special police officer armed for the Chattanooga Housing Authority to do such duty as prescribed herein, subject to certain conditions.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Counsel. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, Public Works, items I and J, please, together.
Item I, a resolution authorizing Department of Public Works Solid Waste Division to extend the Orange Grove contract to September thirty, twenty-twenty-five, with Orange Grove staffing for three refuse and five recycle centers for a total amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Item J, a resolution authorizing Department of Public Works to accept the Organics Management Grant Composting Award by the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, TDE, for the Solid Waste Division for the expansion of recycling service for composting in efforts to reduce waste, with the city's matching grant in the amount of one hundred five thousand dollars, for a total amount of two hundred ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Exciting to see how that compost works out. All right, Police, items K and L, please, Madam Clerk.
Item K, a resolution authorizing the Chief of Police to apply for and, if awarded, accept the FY twenty-five Community Policing Development Micro Grants from the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, COPS, for the grant period of October one, twenty-twenty-five, through September thirty, twenty-twenty-seven, to support overtime expenses for beta testing drones as first responders for law enforcement, in the amount of one hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars. Item L, a resolution authorizing Chief of Police to apply for and, if awarded, accept the FY twenty-five Safer Outcomes Enhancing De-escalation and Crisis Response Training Grant from the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, COPS, to be used for local training and provide overtime training and materials for the city officers and co-responders for a two-year grant period of October one, twenty-twenty-five, through September thirty, twenty-twenty-seven, in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand two hundred seventy dollars.
Councilman Henderson.
Move for approve.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's take a look at purchases, please.
Good evening.
Daniel Harrigan, Deputy Director of Purchasing. We have five purchases recommended for approval this evening. The first is for Chattanooga Police Department. This is a new four-year blanket agreement for police uniforms. The award will go to GT Distributors as the best bid, in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The next is for Public Works Citywide Services Division. This is a one-time purchase of a road construction sweeper, in the amount of eighty-six thousand five hundred fifty dollars. This purchase utilizes the State of Tennessee contract. The next one is Public Works Citywide Services Division. This is a year three renewal for traffic safety material, flashers, and barricades, safety zone, and safety products, has requested a two percent increase due to cost of materials. The new estimated annual spend will be eighty-three thousand dollars. Public Works approved the increase. The next one is Public Works Citywide Services, year three renewal for manhole components. Akison Foundry has requested a one percent price increase due to cost of materials. The new estimated annual spend will be one hundred sixteen thousand dollars. Public Works has approved that increase. And the last one is Public Works Citywide Services Division, year three renewal for high-visibility work clothes. The Reflective Apparel has requested a five percent increase, and Safety Products has requested a two percent increase due to cost of material and tariffs. The new estimated annual spend will be seventy-seven thousand dollars. Public Works has approved the increase.
Thank you very much. Counsel, you have heard the purchases?
Move to approve.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Hit your light if you have any questions or comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We do not tonight have any renewals, RFPs, emergency purchases, or sole source purchases. Okay, that brings us to committee reports. Councilman Henderson, I'm going to start down there with you, and I believe as our public safety person, you might have somebody you want to recognize tonight. Hit your light. Shh. I thought you might want to say something to Chief Hyman. He's in Croatia. Never mind. Okay. All right, well, give us a committee report, sir.
No report.
Councilman Davis.
Yes, next Tuesday, we're meeting in the Parks and Public Works Committee. We'll hear from Jeremy Wood and his team about the city's paving list, and we'll also hear from our newly-appointed Administrator of Parks and Outdoors, April First, about her goals and vision for that department.
Great, thank you. Councilman Harvey.
No report.
Okay. Councilman Elliott.
No report.
Councilman Clark.
It's okay, I'm just kidding. I actually don't have a report, but I do want to take this opportunity to recognize some people here from District Five who do community development. Those are the Rashids, Mr. and Mrs. Rashid, and her husband Shakira Rashid, the presidents, well, she's the president of Lake Hills Neighborhood Association, and she's just a beacon and a golden example of what neighborhood leadership is, and I thank you for being that example for all the work you do in our city. So I just wanted to acknowledge that because they're District Five, but thank you for your work in community development.
All right.
Thank you. Sorry.
I apologize for my bounce around. Councilman Elliott.
No report.
Okay. Councilwoman Dotley.
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Just wanted to thank you all for our second budget working session, that we looked at both of the police and fire, took a deep dive into the police and fire budget, and then closed out with recommendation from Councilman Henderson. Next week, July twenty-ninth, third budget working session, to address first responder pay, we'll have both council proposals, as well as administrative proposals as well, so just wanted to make people aware of that for next week. All right, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Burrus?
No report.
Vice Chairwoman Noel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Legislative Committee met today and discussed what's the senior tax freeze program, and it will be on the agenda for August eighth, the fifth.
Fifth.
The fifth, for voting, to vote on, and I also want to give a shout out to Public Works Jeremy, for that great District Eight. He showed up and showed out more than once. Avondale Community Center last night meeting, and then last week, two weeks ago, he went through and did some things for us in District Eight, cleared out some ditches and some alleys, and so we are so grateful, thank you.
Welcome back.
All right, we have now reached the point in our meeting where we are happy to recognize persons who wish to address the council. If you are here and you'd like to address the council, please line up behind this podium and listen while our attorney reads the rules.
Sure. And at the end of each council business meeting, the chair will recognize members of the public who wish to address the council, and here's your rules. Each speaker wishing to address the council can only be recognized at the microphone up front for that purpose, can have more than three minutes to speak, and you can address the council only upon matters that are within their legislative and quasi-judicial authority, and not on matters which are regulated by other governmental bodies or agencies. Do not engage in vulgar or obscene language, nor use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others, and address your comments to the council as a whole and not towards individual council members. And lastly, do not engage in disorderly conduct or disrupting a public meeting, which is prohibited by Tennessee law, and someone commits that offense if a person substantially obstructs or interferes with a meeting by physical action or verbal utterance with the intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting or gathering. Having stated those rules, please go ahead, ma'am.
All right. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Haley Tredway, and I serve as the University of Tennessee Extension Agriculture Agent for Hamilton County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. I'd like to offer a brief research-based perspective regarding backyard chickens within the Chattanooga City limits. So in my role with UT Extension, our goal is to provide educational support that helps communities make informed practical decisions. Backyard poultry, when responsibly managed, can offer city residents tangible benefits in education, sustainability, and nutrition. To step back and get a bigger picture, farmland is being converted to various forms of housing developments rapidly across the country. Tennessee is ranked fourth nationally for this issue, approximately losing nine point eight acres per hour. As you can imagine, Hamilton County is no exception to this problem. With farmland diminishing locally, there is a need to keep that agricultural connection intact, especially in suburban and urban settings. Backyard chickens can play a role in maintaining that link. Importantly, this conversation overlaps with another critical issue in our community, food access. Several Chattanooga neighborhoods are designated as food deserts where residents face limited access to fresh, affordable food. Backyard hens offer a low-cost, consistent source of high-quality protein and nutrition. For families facing barriers to grocery stores or unprocessed options, fresh eggs can fill a small but meaningful gap. Many cities have already navigated this process with success. Nashville and Knoxville allow backyard chickens with clear, reasonable guidelines, such as limiting flock size, requiring secure coops, and prohibiting roosters. In Nashville, concerns about noise or health issues were minimal following implementation, with most reported complaints being rare and manageable. Even larger cities like Denver and Seattle have seen urban chickens become a well-accepted community-oriented practice that supports food access and sustainability. With Chattanooga being designated as North America's first national park city, this is a wonderful opportunity to further commit to that connection between the city, its residents, and our shared identity as an outdoor-oriented community. UT Extension is well-equipped to support this transition if Chattanooga chooses to move forward. Many of the concerns that have been cited, such as free-roaming chickens, noise, and smell, can be addressed through community education on poultry management. We provide education on care, disease prevention, and best practices to help residents raise hens responsibly and respectfully in neighborhoods. We even have a comprehensive master program specifically for backyard flocks, which I am able to offer through a variety of different formats to make it as accessible as needed to residents. Backyard poultry isn't a novelty, it's a practical tool that supports learning, food security, and community resilience. I encourage the council to see it as part of the solution to larger challenges we already face. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson.
Give me a contact, or you can see me, just see me after the meeting and give me your contact information.
Sounds great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lee Helen, and I currently live in District Eight, and I know the council is having to deal with the same tax issues as so many other cities, but I own vacant lots in Districts seven, eight, and nine, and please raise my property tax. Yeah, I pay like a hundred and seventy dollars, and my next-door neighbor, he pays a hundred, one thousand seven hundred, and if he has a house and I don't. So if there's a brush fire on mine, or a house fire on his, the fire department still has to show up. If the fire department needs a new truck, I'm really not contributing to it the way he is. And new sidewalks, streetlights, Fourteenth Streets getting turned into that bike mobile or a bikeway, my property value is going to go up substantially, and I'm not paying taxes, so there's no reason for me to develop it, because of the math. I mean, I can just sit on it, pay a hundred and sixty dollars a year, and watch it go up ten percent year over year. And so when you look at Glass Street, and all the improvements that were done, streetlights, widening sidewalks, there was never the development that was supposed to happen, it's because the tax on vacant land is way cheap compared to a built environment. So what a lot of cities are doing is, they're doing a vacant land tax, or just a vacant tax, so the land tax is either double or triple if the property has never been developed, or if the house is abandoned. And when you do that, nobody gets a And when you do that, nobody gets evicted if they're renting a house. You're not raising their taxes. You're only raising vacant land and speculators. And when you do something like that, you can freeze property values for seniors without batting an eye. That's easy. But you have so many large properties in the city that are prime for development and having income, and people don't develop it because the taxes are just stupid cheap. So, I mean, just consider that. There are a lot of other cities that are doing it. And if you have a large piece of property that's been in a family for a very long time, and they say, oh, I want to keep this, I don't want to develop that, I want to save it for future generations, well, they can get a 10-year conservation easement that exempts them from this increase. And then after 10 years, they can decide to do it again, or what, but they're locked in for 10 years whether they sell it or not. So you would increase revenue in the city substantially if you just put more care into vacant land. It's just sitting there doing nothing for you, and it's doing nothing for the community. It's just, people are just making money by doing nothing. That's the easiest money there is.
Thank you, Lee.
Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking on the concern of having chickens in our community.
Could you tell us your name and your district?
I'm Mary Morris, President of the Bush Town Neighborhood Association. But I'm speaking on behalf of Bush Town, Churchville, Glenwood, and the Orchard Knob Communities. We have, our homes are very close together. We can stand on our porches and talk to each other, or talk across the street to our neighbor, or stand in our backyards and talk to each other. That's how close our homes are in our communities. Our concern is over the closeness and the disease, noise, odor, pest control, and waste management that would be our greatest concerns. With the disease, the CDC shows a study that the human salmonella outbreaks from handling life poultry has increased over the years. It's reported that most individuals with salmonella have handled chicks or ducks, and most of these individuals contracting the salmonella are children. With the noise, clucking tends to have a loud alarm call if startled, if the chickens are startled or threatened. The calls occur over a short period of time, but they end when the threat is over. So you're going to have all this noise if they get aroused over anything. And the hens that can't reproduce, they're the most noisiest. They take over a role almost as a rooster. The odor and the waste management, that has been a problem with those that do have chickens in our community. The odor, if we're already close and the chickens aren't being maintained, McCamey is hard to get anyone to come out when you call concerning them running in the streets. How are they going to maintain if they're not already keeping up to par? That is our main concern. There already lacks in taking care of these issues. The pest, the manure and feed can attract pests such as rodents, house mice. It can draw larger pests such as foxes, raccoons, and coyotes that we've already seen in our communities. And our children are in our yards playing, but we have to be protective. I came out of the house with a raccoon raised up. I'm scared to go on off my own porch because it's out of its natural habitat. But what's drawing them in? And then, as previously stated, our homes are close together. With those odors, your chicken in your backyard have now become my problem, that I've invested in my home over years, and now I'm labeled and stuck with your chickens. I'm asking you all to just consider Bush Town, Glenwood, Churchville, and Orchard Knob's concerns over this. We do not want these in our community.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Kristi Rashid, President of Lake Hills Neighborhood Association, representing District 5, Lake Hills subdivision. We had a neighborhood meeting on July 8th, and our neighborhood voted no for hens because of the following reasons. A lot of us are seniors. We don't want to contract the disease. We don't want to smell. We have chickens now in our neighborhood. Driving over the hill, I almost ran over four chickens and a rooster. Now, I know we're not supposed to have roosters here, but we have a law already that's here on your books that is not being implemented. We cannot, it's been stated previously, McCamey is already overloaded. So we have no way, any kind of recourse. I understand your ordinance. It's going to change things if it's implemented. Right now, we have things that are present, and it's not being implemented. So how can we guarantee that this is going to change? We don't want the smell. I didn't buy my home to stay next door to chickens. I've been in my home over 40 years, and our neighbors are very concerned about this. We know our voices make noise, just like those hens do. So we're here today to let you know we are not in support of the hens. Thank you.
My name is George Ricks. George Elwood Ricks Senior. I said that senior because I got a son named George. Community advocate, been in the community for a long time. Some of you know me, and some of you don't, but those of you know me, you know I don't usually speak up unless I feel like I'm right about it. And this question about the chicken, I feel like I'm right about it. Do not support it. I live at 611 North Allen Park. I was waking up every morning with a rooster crowing for weeks, for weeks. I called my councilwoman. Thank you, I appreciate you. She got it worked out for me. They moved the rooster, left the hens. Every day, my wife and I come out on our porch, we have to put up with a yard full of hens running around. Now, I know these ordinance and things have spelled out a lot. You've done a great job with it. You really have. But this stuff look good on paper. But in reality, it's not going to be the way you think it's going to be. We live in a crowded community. When I first moved over there, they were begging people to move in. We came in, we had Neighborhood Association, we beautified our yards, and then you can't get out into yours because of all the cars blocking everything. I don't live in a community where everybody have an income where they can take care and do the thing you say on this paper. Half the people that's in our community now are renters. When I first moved over, they were homeowners. Now they renting apartments out, and they renting them to people who may not know how to live the way we live. I'm not trying to be racist, but I got neighbors who don't speak my language, and they don't know how to keep the chickens in the yard. So it's no joke to me. It ain't nothing funny about it. When I got to sit around and hear rooster crowing all night, and we have to put up with this stuff, think about us. If you're going to pass this ordinance, don't restrict nobody. I look down there and I see where you got restriction for if they private tenants or whatever it is, neighborhood, so make the Neighborhood Association part of this. I am hurt to see some of you not sucking a person who is trying to do the right thing for her community. It's wrong. You might live today with a smile on your face, but one day you're going to be pissed off like I am. Thank you.
Little man Ricks is two brothers. He was a schoolboy member for many years. Next month, August 8th, will be...
We state your name for the record in your district.
Eric Atkins. I'm the co-chair of the Unity Group of Chattanooga.
Thank you.
And affiliated with quite a number of groups. Now, next month will be the 36th anniversary of the Brown versus Chattanooga decision being signed, August 8th. And it's ironic that the Brown versus Chattanooga decision and the Voting Rights Act will both happen in the same week. The Voting Rights Act, 1965, and the Brown versus Chattanooga decision, 1989. And as we know and reflect on the Brown versus Chattanooga decision, we know that African-Americans went seven decades without representation in the city of Chattanooga. We know that the state constitution was changed. We know that the city charter was changed. And we know that we had to fight just to be able to have representation. And then, in 1989, you had the Brown lawsuit, which changed because of the at-large method of voting. Now, all of that to say is, the redistricting process played an important role in that because of the voting rights aspect. On two weeks ago, we did read the opinion of Judge Flynn from the Chanceller Court regarding the redistricting opinion, and the Unity Group is in full agreement with the determination of the opinion of Judge Flynn in that order. Because we know that citizens came here to this Diaz, to this body, on three years ago, and had questions and concerns about the redistricting process that were unheard and that were blatantly disregarded. And I would tell you that in some sectors, with some citizens, trust and confidence in this body was deeply eroded. And I know we're talking about chickens, where we have a term back in the country to fence mending. And there needs to be some fence mending with the community regarding this case. Because a lot of the citizens thought their voice wasn't heard during the redistricting process, and it has all sorts of repercussions in terms of voting. And so we hope that the next time we have redistricting, we can follow the method that we did in 2010 and be more open and inclusive in the process and procedures. 2010 was a good process. 2020 was flawed. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Tiffany Rankins, co-president of Lincoln Park Neighborhood Association. I come to this body because I went to the police for a year and a half saying that we have two bad actors in our neighborhood. One of the actors was shot at Saturday night around 11:55. It shattered windows and hit a car in our neighborhood on my street. I think I saw the police, when I viewed the camera, show up around 4 o'clock after the police was called. Our community is not being looked after, and I've been complaining for a year and a half. Following up on that, we did receive a portable camera that was put on the edge of Lincoln Park Lane at O'Neill Street. Hopefully, that will deter some actions, but after this is moved, I'm sure the bad actors will be at it again. Like I say, I've been at this a year and a half, and it's two bad actors that rent in our neighborhood that is causing chaos. Also, let me say that the 6 o'clock meetings time need to come back to 6 o'clock. It is not efficient for you to say, we'll be back in 30 minutes, come back, and you can speak then. Most people are used to coming down here at 6 o'clock before it was changed. I'm told the chairperson has discretion as for setting this. Please change it back to 6 o'clock so we are able to come back and speak. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to the council? Counsel, I think we are finished for the night. We are adjourned. Thank you.